Good afternoon, everyone. This is the monthly meeting of the Dyton Stormwater Committee. It's Wednesday, August 14th, 2024. We're going to call this meeting to order at 1:03 PM. We're meeting in the upper level of the Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue, Dyton. This is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for posting on the town's agenda site and YouTube. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attendance roll call.
David Phillips here.
Lisa Caladonia here.
I'm very here.
Nancy Gulat here. We have a quorum. Agenda item 4A, review discuss act on Brook Street solar basin modification request, which was approved by the Planning Board with conditions. Mr. Redden, Jim Redden, are you there?
Hello, Nancy.
Hi, Jim. And I noticed James is on, too.
Yes, hello.
So would you, either of you, give us the update on where you are with the Planning Board work on Brook Street Solar, what the next step is?
Sure, I can do that, James. And then if, if specific technical questions come up, then, then James is probably the best person to answer because he's had it, has had it a little bit more. Incidentally, we both joined today because I wasn't sure whether I'd be able to make it on, and James was gonna join in as proxy for me. But of course, he brings, you know, some very specific technical knowledge of what's going on with these projects, being the one who is the primary reviewer, that, you know, he's often in a better position to answer those kind of questions than I am. But from a general standpoint, we've had two phases of review that have been approved with the Brook Street Solar so far. They were the original review that we did back in December, and then a subsequent review that included going out to the site that was done in the late winter and early spring, depending on how you like to think of the spring as occurring. We, we provided a peer review memo reviewing the field conditions on March 15th, and again, taking some further look at the existing design out there, which it was, as I'm sure you all know, originally designed as an infiltration system. What we found was that there is a restrictive layer beneath the sand that they had installed as part of that intended infiltration system that was blocking flow and causing the backup into the system. It was down, I think, a good 10 or 12 feet, and James can confirm that a bit for me. But following that, we suggested, we recommended that it be redesigned as a detention facility. The applicant and owner decided to maintain it as a, I guess, I'll call it a sand-filled system that was also essentially functioning as a detention system. So they, they embraced our comments. And then that was brought before the Planning Board, that this was, this was essentially the plan to do this, this redesign. We had some comments on that, that the Planning Board agreed with our comments and our recommendations. And then the applicant submitted some additional materials, actually just before the Planning Board meeting. So we provided them a review of the design on July 10th, the applicant, that is, and the town as well, of course. They responded on July 15th, and then there was a meeting on July 17th. We had not been approved yet to review the materials from July 15th. We submitted a proposal recently, earlier this week, to do that review. The Planning Board will meet again on August 21st. That's been the first meeting since the July 17 meeting. Assuming they approve what it is that we, you know, put forward in that proposal, we conduct that review. And, and then the next steps would be probably, you know, reconfiguring the system in accordance with that approved design, and, you know, determining whether the system was acceptable or not, once it was constructed or reconstructed. James, would you have anything you'd want to add to what I just said?
No, Jim, I think you said it will.
So, Jim, what's the next step now that this has been, you've sent this proposal in? As far as the actual design that was submitted, or the redesign, or the recalculations, the last documents that came in from Nick Fassandola, those are, those are all set as far as what was proposed, what you requested, and what you reviewed of the documentation?
So we haven't reviewed those yet. If the Planning Board accepts our proposal for review of those materials, and I'm assuming you're talking about the materials that Nick sent in on July 15th, which were essentially response to comment, right? So if those get accepted, we'll review them, assuming they're okay, then, pardon me, then they would assumably get approved to go forward with the, with the reconstruction of that facility.
Okay. Questions from the committee? Mr. Aggyar?
Hello, everyone. James Aggyar. Jim, I have a question for you. I read through your August 9th, 2024, submit. I just want to be clear, and I want the record to show that this does not include actual onsite inspections once the basin is reconfigured. So I presume after this review that you do, provided the Planning Board approves it, that information will be forthcoming to us, because I would encourage this committee to make sure that you are the person with the boots on the ground who does the inspections.
Yeah, you, you interpreted that correctly. That's the way we intended it, yes.
Questions from the, yes, Ahmed Hafiz?
Yes, this is Ahmed Hafiz from Grasshopper Energy. I'd like to add to Mr. Aggyar's comment there. If we can get now the proposal for the monitoring and any other scope that's required from Weston and Sampson until the project is, is turned on or this basin work is done, that would be helpful, because like it takes four weeks to get the proposal. We submitted, as Mr. Redden said, the recalculation that was requested on July 15th, and we only got the proposal of reviewing that recalculation the day before yesterday, so after four weeks. So if we can get a scope for all of the work that needs to be done, including the monitoring and anything else that Weston and Sampson will be involved in, that would be very helpful. So it doesn't take like a month from every step to the other, waiting for the planning. If we can approve it all at once, get it approved by the different boards all at once, that would be very helpful for everyone.
Any other questions or discussion? Yes. Why don't you come up here? There's a mic over here.
Bosley, 1680 Pine Street. They had mentioned that they're probably going to be clogging, take place once this is put together. And I know it's been mentioned about who's going to take care of the clogging. And so I'm asking, who is taking care of the clogging? Is there going to be money put aside for the clogging? Is there, is it going to be them? Is it going to be whoever owns it, because they're trying to sell it? Who takes care of the clogging? Is there money put aside?
What is the word you're using?
Clogging? The, the clogging of the pipes?
It would be maintenance.
Oh, you mean maintenance, stormwater maintenance?
Yes.
One of the things that, that is required is that they will have, when they finish, an up-to-date stormwater maintenance program in that outline. It's, I mean, it's, it's a volume. That will be the guidelines that they have to meet. They will be responsible, whoever owns the project. If Grasshopper owns it and then sells it, whoever, Grasshopper is responsible for the stormwater maintenance plan. If in the meantime, they sell it, the buyer is responsible for it and will be there, it's, it just carries on. It will be subject to routine maintenance. There will be inspections done. If everything is working okay, stormwater basins are usually inspected, is it once a year? Is that what we've done on, on existing? But that way, if a problem develops, then the party responsible for maintenance is going to have to step up and take care of it. The basins obviously are not allowed to grow up into bushes and weeds, and this particular basin is going to have a stormwa, a stone bottom, I believe. Is that correct? Jim Redden?
So I didn't quite catch what you asked there. This basin is going to have a...
Mrs. Bosley asked about who's going to be responsible to make sure that the pipes are not clogged and things like that. So I was explaining that the stormwater maintenance plan that will be updated and on file will be followed, that there are, on average, routine one-year inspections of stormwater basins unless there's a problem, in which case the owner will be notified that they have to do maintenance. The basin's not allowed to grow up into trees and that. And I'm thinking it's a big basin you talked about. It's going to have stone in the bottom, isn't it?
Oh, I see. My, James, help me out here, but my understanding is that it'll have sand underneath and that there may be some stone riprap on top.
Yeah, they were gonna, they were gonna put a stone layer on top, so that's what would be visible at the bottom of the basin if you're standing there looking at it.
So this is what we do for all solar farms. This is what's required.
Okay. And I just had a question for Ms. Caladonia, if you didn't mind. I know you had mentioned that you wanted the erosion control report. I was curious, did you have a...
Stormwater pollution prevention report, SWIP reports. No, we never got SWIPs. No, we only got one SWIP over the course of the whole duration of the project, which is absurd.
Yes, Ahmed.
Do you do?
Yeah. The SWIP plans and the SWIP reports were prepared on weekly basis throughout the life of the project. And as agreed with Ms. Caladonia, they were kept onsite in a certain folder, and that's what I understand. After the project was stabilized, there's no SWIP report required unless there is a rain event above a certain level, which I don't remember at the moment what that level is. There was an event, and we prepared a SWIP report and sent it to Ms. Caladonia, but there wasn't any events since then.
No rain events?
Not to that level, not to the level that requires a SWIP report. If I'm wrong, I apologize, but if we missed a rain event above that, I can't remember the...
Quarter inch or more, we've had a lot of rain events, significant rain events. And they're supposed to spend it on a weekly basis, I believe. Each project is different. And I'd love to look at the SWIP requirements of this one, but I think it's weekly.
But until the project is stabilized, right?
But the project's not stabilized because it's not final. I mean, we're, we're talking about this because the project's not stabilized.
The project is...
We're talking about the basin.
100% stabilized. That's what I mean, you know, stabilized is 70% of all the sites that you give it.
I, I wouldn't use the term stabilized for Brook Street in any context. I mean, yes, last time, Mr. Ferry and I were down there when I took pictures over a year ago, in June and July, the difference between June and July, there were weeds and other things growing. But I don't think that there's been any inspection or any review of any kind really since the basin didn't work. It's been all this time trying to figure out what to do to get to the stage where I want to back up. At previous meetings, Mrs. Caladonia said she did not get copies of SWIP, and you remarked that they're onsite. Who has access to the place wherever they're stored?
During the period before the project was stabilized during construction, the site was open every day, and there was a meeting with Ms. Caladonia onsite where she requested the SWIP reports to be placed at the trailer at some, in some area. I wasn't there at that meeting, but I knew that all the SWIP reports were kept in that area, prepared every week.
But they're supposed to be provided to us on a weekly basis.
So...
And after any significant storm event, I believe, of a quarter inch or more.
Haven't even, to the best of your knowledge, have any inspections been done by anybody?
There have been weekly reports prepared and...
Okay. They're written reports or they're in electronic?
Some of them.
Well, it would seem to me it would be wise to either photocopy them and give them to her, even though they're old, or some otherwise getting access to this.
I think they need to be given to the stormwater committee as well, because it's a requirement of the permit.
Exactly. But I'm saying, give them to you, because you're on the committee, and they would be available to the committee. And if we can get them, before you leave Dyton, get them to you. It would be beneficial, because you'll have a chance to at least go through and look at some of this stuff. One of the things that we discussed when there was a Zoom meeting with Peter Carr, and Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mike Mullin, former town administrator, Mr. Ferry, and I, and Ahmed zoomed in, we talked about being able to have all the committees work together, so that when one board approved it, they wouldn't have to wait for the next committee to set up a meeting. So that's why the Planning Board meetings that were held, there were stormwater committee members there. Through the close of the hearing, which was the last meeting, last Planning Board meeting I attended, in discussing this item today, one of the things that I said in talking to Mrs. East today was that the stormwater committee can approve the modification, reconstruction of Basin One, as requested by Grasshopper, from an infiltration basin to a detention basin, contingent on final approval by the Planning Board, Weston and Sampson, and any other town official having authority for this project. This means everything that's required in order for you to actually start construction will get final approval. The stormwater committee understands where Weston and Sampson is coming from. We know they've got a review, more information. Planning Board is waiting for that review from Weston and Sampson. What I'm asking the committee is, would you be willing to approve this motion, contingent on the conditions that I've set? So Planning is going to meet in the 27th of August. Hopefully Weston and Sampson will have been authorized to do the work they need to do to get the information to the Planning Board. And when I say contingent on final approval by the Planning Board, Weston and Sampson, and any other town official, any other town official includes, but is not limited to, Mr. Aggyar in his capacity as building commissioner, Mr. Ferry in his position as both the highway superintendent and a member of this committee. So if, when, if the Planning Board and Weston and Sampson move ahead with this and give them the final okay on August 27th, they won't have to wait for us to vote again. Obviously, any conditions that are not met, this project isn't going to move ahead without those approvals. So I need to know how the committee feels about doing this today, meeting, taking a contingency vote of approval.
You look for a motion?
Yeah, if I get a motion a second, then we'll do discussion.
I believe the meeting is the 21st.
It is the 21st.
21st?
I make a motion. So we'll...
Okay, to, to give it approval based on the contingency of other boards giving final approval and town officials also that may be involved.
Second.
Okay, we get a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Redden or Mr. Pearson, your thoughts on the motion that's on the floor?
James, why don't you go first?
You want me to read it again?
No, I, I think I understand. So you're saying the motion is to approve contingent on approval by the Planning Board?
Yes, and any other town official who may be involved. Again, somewhere along the way, Mr. Aggyar would be involved, but by the same token, if he goes on the site and sees something that's a problem, he would obviously be in touch with Planning to let them know there is a problem, or Weston and Sampson. I'm trying to get this process approved, so that if, in fact, at the next Planning Board meeting, they're okay with what's going on, and Weston and Sampson's okay, then the Grasshopper won't have to wait for stormwater to meet again.
Understood, yeah, and I have no objection with the motion.
And I agree with James.
Okay, because obviously, there's going to be oversight or final approval or final review of, of the work that has to be looked at from Weston and Sampson, so that we know that when this basin is constructed and it's tested or it rains, we know the basin is working. Okay, any, any questions, concerns? Mrs. Bosley?
Question for Lisa. What is the next, I know you said now is not a planting time. What's the next planting date?
The fall.
Just the fall.
Probably after October 1st, right? Ground day?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second, third weekend, I'm told.
Because they did say they were going to plant the trees, that, all those things that they had to do after they cut the trees that Planning Board allowed, and they cut the trees that Planning Board allowed. And just to let you know. And they're also keeping the gates open, both gates, actually, at times. The ones to the solar field and the ones going into the driveway of the solar field. And they showed up on Sunday.
Who?
Jason.
Is he still doing, is Mr. Luchant still doing work for you?
Yeah.
Is he responsible for keeping the site, I'll call it, the gate secured? If you could speak to him, to that effect?
Just one minute.
And on that note, I know Mr. Luchant had submitted one set of SWIP reports to us at one point. Is he still doing SWIP inspections? Who is responsible for doing that? It's all supposed to be in the SWIP document. We're supposed to know, we contact, and it's supposed to be done on a weekly basis, especially when you guys start working again on the site. Can I request James Pearson's input on that as the engineer?
So the SWIP inspections are supposed to be conducted on a regular basis. I don't have the SWIP in front of me, so I, you know, I don't comment on how frequently those inspections are supposed to take place, but some of them are supposed to be done surrounding major rainfall events. Ultimately, since the contractor is the holder of the, the permit under the EPA Construction General Permit through NFTs, you know, the contractor's ultimately responsible to make sure those inspections happen and to prepare those reports. So presumably, they've been doing so, and people is on file, but, you know, that's not something that we've been involved in monitoring.
Any more discussion? Hearing?
On the vote. No, no.
Okay, any more discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, the vote's unanimous.
We'll record a shot of things, please.
Are you all set as far as anything relative to that project from stormwater?
We were at the point of trying to get the scope of work all in place, funded, so the inspections, the final inspections can be done. I'm not sure if this is, this is part of the agenda.
I think the, the money he's talking about is not per se stormwater allocation.
Sorry, I just wanted to point out what you said, the whole thing?
Yes.
That's on the agenda, so that should have to be revised before the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So as far as stormwater is concerned right now, we've given Grasshopper conditional approval, contingent on the, under the conditions that were cited. The next meeting will be the Planning Board on the 21st, and then we'll go from there. Yes.
Yeah, my question, who can ask Western and Sampson for a scope or for, is it the stormwater or the Planning Board?
It's the Planning Board. Will be copied on it, and so will conservation for informational purposes, but really, the oversight, the way that, I believe the way Planning approved is, they were waiting for more information about the, the plan that Nick submitted and what's happening there. What we had said as a committee, once Planning says it's okay, it's going to be okay with us, we're not going to open it all up again. So really, I think you're dealing with Planning, Mr. Aggyar?
Mrs. East today is aware of it. I spoke to her yesterday about this issue. So if you talk to her, she'll, she'll be aware.
Okay. Anything else on Brook Street Solar? Comments, questions, whatever?
Just to please provide the SWIP inspection reports on a weekly basis. I'm not going to go to the site regularly. I need them emailed, and I want to document them that they've been emailed to me.
I know one of our solar farms, the one that, the one I've seen the most of, not only are they weekly, but they contain photographs. That's the one on Tremont and Middle. And then the one, MCAS, that's up at William Street behind Arujos, they also sent photographs and weekly reports up until, you know, they didn't have to do it anymore, so.
I mean, if we have three storms in a week, then they need to do three inspections in a week. So when you're budgeting, I think you should consider that with your project. Because when the project is closed out with conservation, and we don't have all... Because when the project is closed out with conservation and we don't have all that information, we might not be able to close it out.
Anything else on Brook Street Solar? Okay. I would like a motion to take agenda item 6A, update Zero Elm Street Eman Plumbing Building Project Out of Order? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to take 6A out of order, please?
Motion to take 6A out of order.
Your second. Motion made in second, any discussion, hearing, and all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Ferry? Aye. Okay, the vote's unanimous. With abstention by Mr. Agia. Okay, agenda item 6A. Who wants to start? My understanding was, from what I saw, there was some additional cutting in an area beyond what was on the original plan. Did you bring plans or a diagram or anything? Yes.
You have plans.
Okay, if you want to just show the area. If you want, if you want to lay them up here, and then anybody can come up here and look at them. Get some space here.
What we did. This is the location.
Everybody, anybody wants to look at it?
Location of the original site right down here. So this is, this is an expanded view. It's not the same scale as the, as the actual site view. This is the actual site here.
Okay.
Which is, which is actually located down here on the existing land.
Okay.
So the area highlighted in green was the additional clearing.
So this is where it is originally?
That's correct.
Okay.
So the layout includes a 50-foot buffer along Elm Street to keep the existing tree buffer along Hillcrest and to get no closer than 50 feet off of the 100-foot buffer on the wetlands. And then we just did a 20-foot path connecting the site.
What do you need the additional clearing for?
So it's, it's, the owner asked for it, and it's just for a laydown area. He doesn't, he doesn't have any building designs for it or anything like that.
Okay, so the building is what, up here?
Correct, right down here.
Okay, where's the little driveway?
You can kind of see a catch basin right there.
Yeah.
It's right, pretty much right there.
So the driveway, see, it comes in here?
Yep.
So as it was explained to me, I spoke with the property owner, because the building site is small, and this is going to be probably a manufactured steel building, there's, they need an area to lay out the pieces of the building so that they can bring them over and put them in place.
Oh, it's a staging area?
Exactly.
I thought it was for materials.
So it's not, it's not? Is it going to be maintained and kept clear, or is you going to allow this to grow up again?
It's my understanding that it's just going to be cleared, right?
Now, there is some, it's going to be a cliff.
You're going to create a temporary staging area?
Yeah, just to move, like you said, a laydown area, move the materials.
That's this, Tom.
Is it for ongoing plumbing material or for the?
No, for the building.
For the building, okay.
Just for the building.
Understood.
Yeah, if they decided to use it for anything else other than that, they have to go back to planning for a site plan modification.
Yeah.
How much roughly, a rough guess, maybe square feet?
I believe that green highlighted area is about two and a half acres.
Okay, all right. Is this relatively flat?
No, there's, there's pretty well, pretty good pitch to it, but the intent was to just clear it and clear all the brush, but leave all the stumps in place, don't disturb any soils. So it's not, it stays stabilized.
Are there trees there?
Currently, yes.
Are you going to take, are you going to take trees down?
That was the plan.
Part of the original plan?
Part of, yes. Well, the original plan was just to do the site, but I guess the secondary plan was to clear the site totally with the brush and trees coming down.
Okay, all right. Are you bringing in any fill or anything?
Not in that, not in the green highlighted area.
Okay, so there'll be some stumps here and there, but the brush will be gone. It'll be.
Yeah, but after, if you're just going to let it
revert?
Or you got to keep continuing clearing it?
I, I think he's going to continue to clear it. I mean, I can confirm that. There's nothing going in that area right now, as far as I know. It's just to move the materials when the winter comes.
I don't think it's a problem for what you're describing. Obviously, if you didn't already have a stormwater permit, you'd be getting one. Land disturbance is described actually as anything, even cut and brushed.
Even cut and brushed.
So let's say you wanted to plant grass there and it's all brush.
Right.
And that wasn't part of the project. Or it was a new project, then you'd have to come back again. But what you're describing is almost like a temporary add-on to what we're talking about. And as he, as Mr. Agia said, if you intend to, down the road, expand your operation into that area, that would have to go to planning to be looked at, and so.
And just, just refer to the knowledge that the, the limit is, is an acre? If we want to do something like that, that's when you have to get the SWIP and, and.
Updated.
Is that the?
35,000.
35,000, okay.
The only recommendation I would make is to maintain this buffer, which you have said you would.
Yep.
And, and this buffer as well, for those of you in the area. So even though it's just temporary use, it would be in conformance with the bylaw, which, with anyone who had any concern about it, it's not a violation of any of our current bylaws, so.
Okay.
Okay.
This is just an informational thing. This is the EPA.
Okay.
The EPA regs are one acre or more disturbance, you need the permit. The town currently has 35,000 square feet.
Okay.
However, we will be updating
Before we sit down?
Our regs and all that. And one of the things under consideration is making a change to the 35,000 square feet. But again, I'm not sure. It'll depend, we're actually contracted, or will be shortly contracted, Weston and Sampson to do a complete review of the bylaw, regulations, the stormwater management plan and the listed discharge plan. So it's the whole entire stormwater program that was set up in 2007. But, yeah, but for right now, that, that's what you're looking at here, so.
I just had another question, so as a site, you know, the facility got cleared and then, as you know, the access, you've had boards over a swale. Is MBL involved with designing a culvert for that, or what's going on?
So it was not on a culvert, a new culvert was not on the original plan.
Right.
Temporarily, we've put a pipe before we put the, just to get access to the site, we put a stone entrance with, with a temporary pipe.
Yep.
So not to interrupt the flow of the swale. We, there is, right now, there is not, as far, to my knowledge, is not a proposed end design for that.
Okay. Perry, could you take a look at that? One question. As you know, on the corner of, of the, almost the boundary, I believe, of Hillcrest and Elm, there is a steep basin there.
That's right here.
Okay, so they're not too close to that with what they're proposing, okay?
And this was, when this was all afield, that was also open. What trees were in there grew in my lifetime. You know.
That long time?
It's not no large, no large caliber type trees.
Okay.
Culvert, though, CPW is going to be involved with reviewing whatever culvert you've put in there?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So right now, this is the, this is obviously the proposed entrance, and there's a, you can't really tell by this plan, but there's an existing swale that runs down along the side of the road with existing drainage structures. So what we did, not, we, we needed to get access to the site, but as part of the design plan, there are no, there was not a culvert designed for this. So we put a temporary pipe in not to restrict the flow before we put our construction entrance in.
Right.
So, but as of right now, there's not a permanent design for that.
Have you been there, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, I was surprised when I drove by where the riprap and stuff is. I was thinking it was further north. I was.
You know what, because that, because that plan, that plan is deceiving. That's why this, if you look at the existing plan, that's why the lot itself is so big.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so it's actually down the.
Okay, Mr. Agia?
Just for the committee and people at home's application, when a building permit is issued, this is very highway superintendent, site office, library permit. So all of this is addressed for the building permit process, which we haven't got to yet. Again, I appreciate you being preemptive and proactive with trying not to restrict flow. But, yeah, this will all be flushed out when you have a final permit.
Do you have anything else for conservation?
No.
Any, any, anything from the committee? Mr. Pearson, Mr. Redden, you were involved with Zero Elm Street earlier on. Do you have any questions on what's being described?
I don't have any specific questions at this point. I know you guys were looking at some materials upfront, and that would be helpful to see. I don't think we have those in our files. But other than that, now, the, the general, general nature of what you're talking about sounded pretty clear. James, I don't know, I know you had to depart early. I'm not sure if you're still on the meeting or not, and if you had any comments. I think James may have been called away, so.
Okay. Okay, I think we're all set there. As I said, they're clearing land. I noticed it when I drove by the other day. And this was just a matter of additional area to be cleared, as you heard, for staging. And it was not clear exactly what was entailed, but I think we're, I think we're all set. We're good to go as far as what's been proposed. Not affecting the existing stormwater permit. So I think we're all set.
So we're, we're allowed to clear trees in that, in that area now, or?
You're, you're allowed to do the work you need to do to create the staging area.
Gotcha.
Okay, now, as Mr. Ferry said, the trees that are there are not giant trees.
Right.
If you are getting into an area of taking down large trees, similar to what we've had at solar farms, and those trees were not part of the original proposal, then you would be coming back for permission to do that. What, again, what you're proposing is creating a staging area. So that's not the same thing as wiping out a lot of big trees because you're going to build the building there, or you've moved the building to an, the other part of the site.
Right.
So, so the clearing should move ahead. Mr. Agia?
Yeah, I agree. Right.
No grabbing, right?
All, all the stumps will stay in place, yeah.
That's great.
Yep. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Going back to agenda item 5A, which is Blue Wave Solar, Tremont and Middle. Mr. Redden or Pearson, are you waiting for anything from Blue Wave?
Yes. My understanding is that from a previous meeting, I think it was in May, there was a request made consistent with one of our peer review memos and discussion of this group. The applicant was ordered to provide calculations for the as-built drawings that had been, had been provided to us for review. And I don't believe we've seen those materials yet.
So Greg or?
Hey, how's it going? Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm in the car right now, so I might be in and out, but.
Alexandra, either of you, can you address what Mr. Redden just said?
Yeah, I, I I remember getting asked for a check for the peer review. I have, I do not recall ever being asked for calculations.
Oh, the check for the peer review, I think that was for conservation. That was not for stormwater, just to clarify.
There was another check back in April, though, I think it was sent for the stormwater.
Alexandra, do you wish to state?
Yeah, I also don't remember seeing any requests for calculations. I, I believe the as-bills were sent over. But I, I don't remember seeing anything that there was anything additional needing, needed, unless for some reason I wasn't included on that.
Jim Redden, you wish to clarify again what it is you're waiting for, for this Blue Wave project?
Right, so we had the as-built drawings, but we didn't have calculations that went along with them, like the flow calculations, the H&amp;H kind of stuff.
So Alexandra, Greg, how soon can you get those to Mr. Redden?
Um, I, I think we should be able to get those pretty shortly. There were almost no changes to as-built, so I'll reach out to my engineer and have him get those updated, and I think we can get those out to, you know, the next few days or a week here.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Redden, on that one?
No, I think that was it on that one.
Okay, agenda item 5B, MACS Arujos. We waiting for anything there? Was, I think you were looking for as-bills for that one. Did they ever arrive? This is a big.
And I apologize. I think that, that I can, I confused in my list the, the two projects. So I have Blue Wave on one and the Arujio Clearway on the other, so I very much apologize. The the calculations that we needed were for Clearway, Arujio. And then as far as Blue Wave goes, I know that that application was filed with the Conservation Commission for a COC and that we're going to be providing stormwater review as part of that. And that, that's going to include, occur under that Conservation Commission review. So I'm sorry for the confusion earlier. That was, that was my fault.
So for Blue Wave, what is needed? Blue Wave meaning Middle and Tremont Streets, and you mentioned Concom. So is this the final review or the final last look, or what is it?
So, so this is the review of the application that was sent in for that COC. And that included stormwater, so, you know, I believe it would be more or less a final review.
So is that in the works, or are you waiting for something?
We're not, we're not waiting for anything. The proposal that we sent in is under consideration by the town through the Conservation Commission. And so we're just waiting for approval to get started on that. That was, that was a proposal we sent in recently. Lisa, there isn't any update on that, is there?
Well, thanks, you have one.
Did Concom approve the proposal, or they haven't reviewed it yet?
We approved the proposal, but where the question lies is that there was some disclosures of ethics disclosures.
Yeah.
That's right.
The Board of Selectmen were asking them to look into a little bit more, so we're waiting.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm waiting for ethics and Weston and Sampson. Yeah.
Okay, is, is that the only thing? Mr. Agia, do you have anything? You're all set? Okay. All right, so now.
Can I just ask a quick clarifying question? I know this isn't Concom, but is that proposal not ready to be reviewed for, I was planning to go to the Concom meeting tomorrow night, but if not, I won't show up.
Yeah, you don't, you don't need to show up. That's, that's kind of on hold right now, Greg.
All right, um, yeah, okay.
Meeting next week, and we hope to have an answer after next week's meeting. Sorry about that. Meeting next week, and we hope to have an answer after next week's meeting. Sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. I appreciate that. I'm glad I called into this one, at least. Thanks, everyone.
Is anything else needed on our end to move anything along, just to make sure that we are doing everything we can to close these out?
Sounds like you've got to wait until the selection meet to, to resolve this ethics conflict of interest situation. And as she said, they meet next Wednesday night. So I would say check back with Lisa sometime after Wednesday night and see if it got resolved at the selectments level.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. So Mr. Ridd, moving back to 5B, MACS Arujos, this is the one you're waiting for, the calculations for the as-built drawings?
That's correct.
Okay. So are those coming through Pete Williams or who's supposed to provide them?
If that's a question to me, I'm assuming that would be through the applicant and that they would come to you folks probably first. Or maybe they would be sent to you directly with the CC to us?
The, the final work that Weston and Sampson will do at the Arujos Solar Farm site. Has that proposal been approved and is it funded? And you're just waiting for these calculations to finish up what you have to do?
I'd need to, I'd need to double check on that, but I think we're. I can't recall whether we need to submit. It's been a couple of months and I can't recall off the top of my head whether we need to submit another proposal. I can check that while, while we're in the meeting here and figure it out for you.
Okay. Okay, so. Just for informational purposes, we'll put Blue Wave on next month's agenda just to find out what happened with Concom. And assuming the select can get this ethics thing resolved, the MACS Arujos will be there to see if we, if the information and calculations have been submitted to you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments on the Solar Farm at Arujos? Hearing none? Okay. Agenda item 7A. So Mr. Ridden and Mr. Pearson, I think that covers everything. You don't have to stay with us for the rest of this unless you choose to do so.
There is, there is one other item that I bring up and that is Hunter's Hill Community Center. That, that is, and Lisa, I believe is familiar with this too and may have additional information. But there is a proposal that, or excuse me, there was an application that came in to the Conservation Commission that was going to require, I guess I'll just call it an alteration of their existing stormwater system that was built, but never, never fully, never fully charged, I suppose, or never fully put online. And that they were, they were looking to make some, some changes, some flow alterations to that. That came in through the Conservation Commission. We submitted a proposal for that, which was approved. And we're going to be doing that stormwater review. And I think that, that you folks just needed to be in the loop on that as well.
Okay. So we'll put this on for next month's agenda to find out what's happening. Hunter's Hill is not on this agenda. So other than providing that update, we can't discuss it anyhow. So stormwater will be, is in the loop and we will add it to the September agenda to find out what happened or where, where the work is as far as progress goes. Is that okay with you, Lisa?
Yeah.
Okay. Jim, you all set? Jim Ridd?
I think I'm all set. There's just that one item with Clearway, Arujos that, do you want me to just confirm to you whether, whether we need to do an additional proposal or whether we have that covered under our existing work?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'll do that offline.
Okay. Whatever you send to me, I'll share with the committee. So they know. So when we get together in September, we will, we will know ahead of time where, what the situation is and where the project is as far as wrapping it up or finishing it off, whatever has to be done.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you too, Nancy.
Agenda item 7A, new business, Jeff Reed, Sunny's Way Drainage Modification. Mr. Reed?
Brought my engineer, Rob Ryan, with me.
That's fine. If you want to bring this over and put it on the table so the committee members can, anybody can get up and look at it. And then you can explain it like the other gentleman did with his plans.
The picture's bigger than I thought.
Not a problem. We have plenty of space here. Okay, so if you, you can stand, there's a mic right there. So if you want to explain.
Sure.
And have your engineer, just tell us what this is about.
Absolutely. So this is, my address is 102 Sunny's. This is the neighboring property of 100 Sunny's. There's a swell that goes behind our, my property, jags around, goes behind his, goes down here into a stormwater system. The problem is.
Stormwater system meaning town?
Yes. So. I think the town took it over.
Excepted road, but the, the outflow is HOA.
Okay.
So the stone swell, in terms of, I can tell there's no interior pipe in the swell. It's obviously not effective, as you can see there. So my proposal is to create a drainage system. I've been working with Tom Perry quite often. He's been wonderful. Working with the engineer, coming up some sort of drainage system to take on majority of that water. There's probably going to be percentages while we figure out the load of it. This is, these, basically these water trails in the pump. In order to save my property. So it's just an idea. I didn't want the whole property to go underwater because that's what was going to happen. Obviously, those are all temporary solutions until I figure out a permanent one. There hasn't been any, outside of this drainage plan, there's no viable way of doing this any other way. The contractor and the site developer were absolutely wonderful and left no easement to the swell. So even if I wanted to change the swell, I don't have legal means to do so. So I'm kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place.
I have two questions.
Sure, shoot.
This picture here.
Yep.
Is this the outflow that I'm seeing come here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And what's this definition of?
This was a garden.
Okay.
At one point.
Okay.
So you don't have a picture here. So when the water's like this, it's against the lip for his bulkhead also. He's got about an inch and a half before it goes over the top of it.
It's very scary.
So this, is this water always here or is only when it rains and you end up with this?
It's, it's only when it rains on a heavy load and it wasn't just a one case occurrence.
Repetitive storms.
Okay.
It's taken him a couple of days to pump this water down in the yard. So.
Where are you putting this?
Quite a while.
So this one came from, I put a pump over here before and I ran a hose up and around. And what my intention was is I saw this as a function that I pumped it here and it did what its job was. Then I said on the next storm, I said, well, you know what? I'm going to move the pipe on the other side and see how this storm holds the water. So it gave us a real good indication on, you know, can this hold up volume? I was hoping there was some sort of area here because it would be a little probably easier. But there isn't. I guess this pipe is in the middle of the road where this one is actually accessible.
So this depiction here that we're seeing, where's the outfall going to go?
Into the catch basin.
And which catch basin? Is that depicted here anywhere? Okay.
This is his house.
Yep.
So that plan's proposing this basin.
That CB or anything?
Right now, it's going to this stone swell, around this house down, and it's piped into this basin and from that stone to here.
Okay. And so I understand that you want to collect the water from this swell.
Uh huh.
A subterranean and then connect directly to the CB?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
And at that point, why don't we discuss the communication with the HOA?
Oh, yeah. They, they, they basically said, we're okay with what you want to do as long as we don't have to pay for it.
Yeah, we did, we did get a sign on.
So we're, we're after us and HOA, no ice in the road. I mean, that would be us. The minimal disturbance would be this one sidewalk to get the pipe into that basin. That, that's probably the least intrusion there. And then.
Yeah. So conservation? So you have, you're talking about work in a buffer zone. So this, this, would this require any tree removal? Is that all on your lawn?
No tree removal.
Okay.
So yeah, anything from this point forward? There's zero trees from this point forward.
Are you proposing, the engineer, I'm sorry, your first name?
Rob, yeah.
I'm sorry. Are you proposing a specific location for the basin and reshape in the backyard? Or you already designated?
I, I, I think, I, I, we'll, we'll do some, you know, tighter survey for points to get, to get a low spot. But we're figuring somewhere in the middle. So, you know, a little bit of further work just to get an exact location practical in the low spot in the swell. So it won't be outside of buffer, it won't be in the buffer zone, but it won't be outside of this property line or anything.
So I want to mention the tree thing. This is a dated picture before I bought the property. This is from the D.
Yeah, I only used this because it was clear that the next two images.
Yeah. Okay. Well, so I was just going to say from a conservation perspective that it would be something that the commission would want to review. So you and I will just have to talk about, I think you probably could get away with maybe doing it as an RDA, but you're going to have to file an application with the Conservation Commission for it.
In the final iteration of capability.
Yeah.
Once, after she's done beating you up.
That's not beating anybody up. Ask Dave.
After Dave's done beating you up.
Well, the good news is I am planning on planting trees on this side once I have whatever figured out.
Yeah, great.
They have some good plant life.
It's obviously going to get fixed, you know?
So when, when it's done, who's maintaining this?
Oh, that's, that would be me.
You keeping it great clear? You're going to keep the great clear?
Yes. And then our idea, we were actually just discussing that, is putting like an inlet here so I could put a jetter in if I ever had to.
Put a clean out to bring?
Yeah, some extra.
What size pipe were you thinking of using?
I, I, I know 10 inches or even eight inches would probably work within the elevation change we have. But we're, we're still looking at pipe types and what's more practical based on cover.
Like something self-cleaned, if you can.
Yeah.
There's a lot of water that comes out of that.
Yeah, no, yeah. I, I think, I think if the proposal, if a catch basin here and a drain manhole here, if they have a sump, whatever infiltrates should, there you land in the sump, but.
It's been a while since, so with the wrong winter, those pipes, I'd be even worried that 12 inches is not enough. But the 12 inches would be self-cleaning.
Right.
Yeah.
So a little bit of frost in the ground with six inches of melting snow on top with a rain event, this, you wouldn't even see this.
Yeah.
There's a lot of water.
Right. So you're just talking about removing the water from your yard, but.
That's actually going to help a few yards.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are connected, so.
Sure, yeah.
Right. Yeah. So I would be concerned about pipe size. Make sure to keep your maintenance requirements down. You're thinking for that. And then the intake location obviously needs to be in the best location to do its job.
Yeah.
You'll figure out.
Yep, absolutely. Makes sense. Yeah. And if there was any doubt, I think the key point, what I keep picturing is if it was, if the development at first was designed to run his water, Jeff's water out around the corner and down into, to a double catch basin at the road, then even his isn't functioning properly.
Right.
So he, his yard has no chance until his drains and then, you know, it's quite the backup.
Okay. So the next step is you've got to file with the Conservation Commission. Okay?
Okay.
And I would say that if you have new information or additional information you want to provide to stormwater, we meet the third, normally the third Wednesday, but just get in touch with me and say, hey, we got an update. We want to give it to you. Or if you don't have that for September, but maybe October, just so that we know what's going on as far as what changes are. But, but yeah, Concom is your next step.
And I would add the buffer zone to that, the 100-foot buffer zone for that.
Yeah, demonstrate that.
Flag it or did you have someone flag it? What does that represent? A new line or an old line?
This is just a drain, conceptual drain line.
That was off the, off the original plan set, yeah.
That's fine.
That's probably pretty accurate.
Yeah.
So what do they need from us and just a?
I think a stormwater connection permit.
Yeah.
Because this is ours. So a stormwater connection permit, I think is the only thing we need. This pipe is yours essentially. That was clean out you're referring to. I would put more than one, by the way. Okay? Any change in direction should have one.
Okay.
So just, just so you don't have any issues with maintenance down the road. So I, that's my opinion, just stormwater connection permit.
And outside is just keeping us up to date. He doesn't need any other else?
Not, no. And to keep us up to date, it's mainly so we know what Concom is doing. If for some reason something develops that what they decide affects what we do, we need to know about it. But other than that, as Mr. Ag, I said, the connection permit, you know?
So in the process of the, forgive me, I haven't been through this part, particular process before. So I file an application for.
RDA.
RDA.
We can talk about that after the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that makes it a stormwater.
Okay. And I guess my last question is, and I don't know how long that takes, that process takes. And if it would be done before winter or not be done before winter?
Probably before winter, yeah.
Probably before winter?
Yes.
Is there a way, since we are going to do a few of the cleanouts, is there a way using the stormwater to tap the drain and bring it to a place where it doesn't obstruct into that, I don't know, it's conservation area? And the reason why I ask that, it may sound silly, but I would prefer to, if we do get impending water, last September was pretty awful. I'm not sure everybody remembers. I could pump into something that's not into, you know, the affected area and then permit the small section of it. Or is that not viable?
So what Tom is allowing you to do is normally not allowed. You're not supposed to pump into stormwater infrastructure. But obviously, this is an extenuating circumstance. So I don't think we as a committee would support, I'm speaking for everyone, you having an ongoing pumping.
It wouldn't be a permanent thing. It would just more, because right now I have the green pipe that goes over the walking area and that's what I was trying to.
But I, I think I can answer your question. You can correct me, Lisa. In order for you, so you're talking about a structure somewhere here outside of the buffer zone.
Well, if I had a clean out here, I could tap here and stop it at the clean out and then get all the permitting done and then take the pump hose and just.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Just for a temporary scenario.
And a sidewalk could be restored before winter too. That would be, that would be good.
This is my concern.
You might be able to put this whole run in up to this manhole.
Yeah.
And if, if we're outside of the buffer zone, I think that's what he's saying. Can we?
This, this the sidewalk?
As, as during the process of ironing out the RDA.
Yeah, I'm siding 100 foot.
Yeah.
Yeah. I see.
I was just concerned about the little kids, you know, riding their bikes and falling, you know, that's, that's my number one.
Well, that makes sense.
Good Halloween prank, though.
Other than that, Mr. Ferry, does that work for you?
So, yes. So I, I do have one more question, Tom. Who's going to actually do the connection to the stormwater basin?
One of them.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I don't know if the town and car is bonding or not, but.
Well, this is a fairly new. Well, this is a fairly new discussion. That's why I'm asking it.
Yeah.
It hasn't happened, so.
It would be, yeah, the normal bonding that the jackalope may know that stuff.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to do it, I'm totally open hearted. I'll just throw it out there.
We don't want to get in the.
We'll we'll inspect the connection certainly, yes.
Yeah.
It worked with Mr. Ferry.
Yeah.
Uh, the main thing is, um, as Miss Aggie, I said, uh, this is the first. This is anomaly allowed, but um also we recognize the problem. Um.
Someone you have a a contractor doing the work.
Yeah, so we haven't figured out who that may be yet.
Right.
It's going to be based off the scope of plan.
Usually they have insurance as part of the application that Jim's alluding to that we would need to allow the road the road opening permit.
One thing we will require is a certificate of insurance from the contractor. And it should state, uh, also insured town of Dayton.
Okay.
Okay, um. And that's that's a pretty standard thing.
Yep, very familiar with it.
Anything permit?
Yeah, that's all through my office. The road opening and the trench road with my office. I'll be responsible for making sure that your contractor is has a license, license has proper insurance. So yeah, that'll all be done through me. First, first, if you decide to do it the way you just described, that's something we could start on right away.
Okay.
Um, you would just have to show us the buffer zone on the plan you submit, like make sure your work is outside of the buffer zone. And uh we can we can allow you to do that.
Great.
With the with the permits.
Right.
So we have trench road opening, same thing, I guess there.
No, they're not too different.
Oh, they are too different.
The trench initiates the road opening, so you would come to my office or do it online. Um, trench permit, road opening permit gets submitted to me, which is a selectments permit. And then I I give the selectman my trench permit, your road opening permit, and then they act on it.
And the other one was a stormwater.
Connection.
Connection permit.
And then the part of the conservation.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so this is my contact.
Miss Heather, you you okay with the notes?
Okay.
I'm actually here. You you okay?
Okay.
You get the names of the players. Okay.
So Tom, are you going to take care of uh providing the stormwater connection permit?
We have one, we do.
Okay, so um just to recap, you're going to get in touch with Concom.
Uh huh.
You're going to be working with Mr. Agia. You get the trench permit and and so forth and so on, and you're going to be working with Mr. Ferry as far as the stormwater connection. But once you start the work, it's assuming everything is okay with Concom. Then Concom gives you the okay, then Mr. Ferry and Mr. Agia will be your contact people.
Uh huh.
Uh, and then, as I said, um, let me know if you get something to tell us, an update in September or October. Or if it moves along quickly, you might just want to send in an email that says it's done and whatever.
I'll keep you apprised the entire way.
Okay, okay, that works.
Very much appreciate it, Tom.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Agenda item eight, are there any unanticipated items?
Thank you. I think you know what.
I do.
Thank you.
Lisa, do you have anything unanticipated?
Have a good night.
Um, any public input? Uh, correspondence? I don't have any. Uh, we don't have minutes for approval. Um, the report on expenses, the op of funding, uh Mr. Purcell, the town administrator, told me that the money came in. Um I had talked to the town accountant and she was checking to see if it's ready to issue the contract or if the contract is has been sent out. So as soon as I know that Weston and Sampson start work on this, we're going to get them working on it. As a matter, I got I did get an email from uh Newton Teta asking me, by the way, where are you with updating the post-construction? And I said, my understanding is the money's in. It's a matter of either issuing the contract or actually setting up the schedule of work. I got to get back to him um on that. Um. Our next meeting date is the third Wednesday of September. Is
Eighteenth.
September the eighteenth. Um, and just before I adjourn, um I did mention to you, I had sent um not I, Mr. Ferry and I had sent letters to Mr. Agia. His appointment is coming up for renewal at the selectments meeting. And the other letter went to Mrs. uh Katavia from the Board of Health requesting when they get a full Board of Health, excuse me, that they appoint somebody to the stormwater committee, which will give us the uh seven-member committee. That we were we were set up to have. Uh, Mrs. Katavia?
Where am I?
When do I, uh, when do you anticipate an appointment to the Board of Health?
Tuesday night.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, is there anything else to come before the board? Anything anyone can think of? Very nothing. I want to take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
What are you shaking your head for? Lisa, will you second that?
Oh, I'll second.
We have a motion to second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion uh two nineteen. It was an article in the Edelbrooke paper, and I just made some copies of this. Um. This just, this is just an article that talks about the firm in Mansfield being fined by the EPA to the tune of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars because they violated stormwater discharge.